Good evening, everyone. Call this joint work session with the Richfield City Council, Planning Commission, and Community Service Commission to order. Today is March 28th, 2022. This meeting is being held virtually on WebEx. Today, we'll hear an update about the progress made to date on the I-494 Airport to Highway 169 project. Staff, would you please take role?
Ellie, were you going to take role, or would you like? Would you like me to?
Oh, sorry. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Let's see, I can take role.
Thank you.
I'll start. Commissioner Keneely.
Hi.
Commissioner Sturza.
Hi.
Commissioner Holmberg-Johnson.
Hi, present.
Let's see. Sorry, I don't have my list in front of me, going off of memory.
Is that Commissioner Serman on?
Commissioner Serman.
Present.
Thank you. And then I'll also note, yep, you also want to note the members of the council that are present.
Commissioner Supple.
Here.
Commissioner Hayford-O'Leary.
Here.
Commissioner Troutman.
Here.
Commissioner Wey.
Here.
Okay.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Tessa, are you with the Community Services Commission?
I am.
Thank you. Okay, role has been noted, thank you. Commissioner Keneely, do you want me just to take over then?
Excuse me. Is there any other business to address before we begin?
There is not.
Great, thank you, thank you.
Okay, so, yep, as a reminder, this is an update on the Visual Quality Advisory Committee, which was started about six months ago in November of 2021. The idea here is to address the aesthetics and the way that the 494 project is going to connect and address the context of the communities that it passes through. So I'm going to pass it over to Lisa Austin with Mindot. She's going to take us through the presentation and introduce their team who's here tonight.
Very good, thank you, Melissa. So I'm Lisa Austin with Mindot. I work in the Center for Community Connections, and I've been the project manager for the visual quality portion of the 494 project. And my colleagues Amber Blanchard and Andrew Latoya are on too. I don't know if you want to introduce yourselves and say a few things, either one of you? Oh, Amber's waving. She's the 494 Corridor Director, and Andrew's the project manager. If you want to unwaver, say hello.
Yes, hello, sorry.
Very good, thank you. Yep, no problem. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen, so just bear with me while I move the slide screen around for a second. Want to put the slides in front of me, so if you see my face, it looks like I'm looking at the camera. Okay. All right, can people see my screen?
Yes, Lisa.
Very good, thank you. All right, so, like I said, I'm here to talk about the Visual Quality Manual, and I'm also going to mention the Context Sensitive Solutions Framework. So before I get started, just to remind everybody, this is a part of the 494 project that goes from the airport to 169. There are several areas noted, 1 through 9, on the map, and then at the top of the screen, you can see Project 1, 2, 3, and 4, and those are highlighted each in a different color on the map. The Project 1 in blue is what we're working on now for the design and build, design-build-bid contract, and that will be bid out this summer or fall, and the construction will start in 2023. The other three phases aren't funded yet, but they are, you know, they're planned for how they'll be changed. The main changes along the corridor are really to add the EZ Pass lanes. It's called MinPass on the screen there, but that's been changed to EZ Pass to change the interchange at 35W, and then to add these four bridges, you know, reconstruct three of the bridges and add a pedestrian bridge at Chicago. So if you're not familiar with the project or you want an update, you can go to the project website and read more, but that's just a reminder that this is a big project over many years, and just part of it will be built in the near term. So as far as the visual quality process goes, we established a Visual Quality Advisory Committee, and this includes Mindot and the cities and the counties along the corridor. It has staff people, it has elected and appointed people, and representatives from the community, so I think there's close to 45 people. This group's been meeting monthly and even more often the last few weeks, so we meet our deadline of March 31st to have the project done, the visual quality process done. In addition to this advisory committee, we also have gone out to the public three times, first in the December-January timeframe, then again in February, and then we just did some at the beginning of March. And this covered different phases of the visual quality process. We have consultants on board. S.E.H. is working on pulling all the things together along the corridor, and their landscape architects are the ones working on the Visual Quality Manual. And then they have a subcontractor, Forecast Public Art, who's helping with some of the public engagement, and then the Context Sensitive Solutions Framework. So the deliverables are this Visual Quality Manual, which is, you know, typical for Mindot projects. You know, we have a manual for a corridor that, you know, kind of identifies the architectural treatments on the infrastructure. And then for this project, we are also doing this Context Sensitive Solutions Framework. I've got a couple slides coming up to describe these things. So this is a typical layout of a Visual Quality Manual where you're, you know, looking at, like I said, the architectural treatments and aesthetics, you know, on a bridge or on the infrastructure. So what are the textures of the walls? What does the railing look like? What do the bridge piers look like? So this is really in the Visual Quality Manual what Mindot will leave as part of the project. The Context Sensitive Solutions Framework is a guide that helps define where there can be public art, or placemaking, or other things that the community can add later. So this guide, this separate manual, will be identifying what we've heard from the Visual Quality Advisory Committee and from the public about what they'd like to see that can be added later by the community, so the things that Mindot won't add. So, for example, Mindot can't pay for public art. We can allow for public art, you know, here you see it's on a wall under a bridge, and we can allow for, in this case, there's some benches and some public space here, but, you know, we can't, we can't put that as part of the project, but we can allow it to be added later. So that's what will be put in the Context Sensitive Solutions Framework Guide. Any questions on that so far, what we'll see in each of the guides? I don't see any hands up, so I'll keep going. All right, so typically, as part of a visual quality process, there's, you know, typically three phases. We want to first understand what's important to a community. So in Phase 1, we ask questions about what's important about the history of the area. Why do you like to live in Richfield and Bloomington? You know, what are the natural features in the environment? You know, what are there parks that you like, you know? So just understanding what's important in the community. In the second phase, the landscape architects have the task of trying to turn what they've, what we've heard from the public into drawings, so trying to think like, what kind of things that the people say they liked, and how, what does that look like? And then the last phase is to, you know, to choose one design and apply that to the different places in the corridor. So you can see that, you know, these phases were aligned with when we went out to the public, December, January, and then February, and then in March. So just a recap of some of the engagement. Again, we went out three times. Every single time, we went to, you know, we had pop-ups at farmers markets or in local businesses. We would send emails out to people that have subscribed to the 494 project, but also our partners sent out the emails, you know, I think, you know, the cities sent them out to their lists, the 494 Corridor Commission, so a lot of emails went out. There was a lot of social media, you know, Facebook ads and other social media where people could, you know, link to more information. We had an online survey, so all of these social media pieces pointed to an online survey. We also did virtual listening sessions. We posted flyers around, so people that didn't have technology would have a chance to learn about it by seeing flyers that were posted in areas along the corridor. And then we also sent out postcards about midway through, so people could go to the website or learn about it. We put a phone number on that too, and we actually received a few phone calls from people that didn't have technology and still wanted to learn about the project. So all of this happened during COVID, so we couldn't do anything in person, but I'm, we were pretty impressed with the amount of outreach we were able to do, and, you know, thousands of people responded, and we had, you know, really good feedback. If anybody wants more details on the number of people and how we contacted, we can certainly provide that, but it's a pretty robust engagement effort. So in that first phase, here's a little summary of what we heard. The Forecast Public Art put together this word cloud, and if you're familiar with word clouds, the larger the word is the more times we heard it. So, and people were asked, you know, to give three words or phrases that they would say about their community. So lots of people mentioned the parks. A lot of people said it was great. A lot of people said it was friendly. And there's a lot of references to nature and parks and lakes and green space. And there's also a lot of themes of people and services and things like that. So as the landscape architects went to start drawing these things, we kind of developed three themes from these. One was, you know, nature-based, blue skies, green, I don't remember exactly how we phrased it, but it was all about nature and natural things. And then the other one is people make the place, and then the third theme was sort of connectivity, because the bridges would connect the neighborhoods, and these communities are well-connected, so lots of themes about connectivity. So three of the, or four of the concepts that the landscapes architects drew are pictured here. These were the four finalists that we went, again, out to the public and asked which one of these they liked best. The top one, we called Winds and Waves. I think the second one, we called Sunrise/Sunset. The third one is based on, you know, lake beds or depth maps on lakes. And then the last one is kind of reverb, you know, sound waves or wind kind of impression. The outcome of that was, lake beds was the preferred design, pretty much in all the outreach we did, all the engagement, you know, the kind of lake beds rose to the top. The other thing people said about lake beds is it was unique to Minnesota, or unique to the community. There's lakes and rivers that are important here, and certainly Minnesota, the land of 10,000 lakes. So as we were making this final decision, that seemed to resonate with a lot of people. Any, those other designs might look good anywhere in the country, but, you know, lake beds is special to Minnesota. So you can see there's a little more detail in designs. Here's what my, a railing might look like, a retaining wall, and what it might look like on the side of a bridge, what we call that a wing wall. So as we've selected that as the final design, the landscape architects are doing more detailed renderings of what that might look like. You can see there, it's on a retaining wall. You can see a little bit of the bridge, the railing showing there. Here's a little bit more of it on a wing wall, a more detail on the railing, so starting to really see it come together. Another couple concepts of what the railing could look like. So this is what the landscape architects have been focusing on and working on getting into the final Visual Quality Manual. Another close-up of the railing. Another rendering of it all together. And then the colors, just to note, the colors of the walls are this light tan, and then the colors of the metal is this black. Federal Highways gives us about five choices for walls, and maybe four or five choices for railings, and these two seem to be the best for this project. So that's the color scheme. And then another part of what we're looking at is where the noise walls will go, and there'll be a voting process that happens a little bit later this spring, so that people that live near where the proposed noise walls are will get to vote. So these, these are not final yet. We need to get feedback from the public about whether they want these noise walls in these places, but these are potential locations for noise walls. As you can see, there's, most of them are on the north side of 494, so most of them are in Richfield, and there's one in Bloomington on the south side. What these might look like on the community side are this brick-looking, stone-looking design, so we call this random ashler. So that's what it'll look on the community side. And on the highway side, it'll be either lake beds or a simple texture that coordinates with lake beds. It kind of depends on whether there's a retaining wall underneath the noise wall, and some places, there's retaining wall below a noise wall. So the highway side will have the pattern on it, or be incorporated with a retaining wall that has the pattern, and on the community side, it'll look like this brick-looking thing. Any questions on noise walls? I think we had some questions last time when we met.
Yeah. Lisa, this is Sean Hayford-O'Leary, City Council. Yeah, because I had concerns about the noise wall community side in the past, and I think a month ago, you were saying it was going to be bare concrete, or we had to pick one or the other, so this is a new, this is a new, seems like an improvement from what we heard a month ago.
Yes, and I thought you'd be pleased with it, yeah. When we went back and looked into how we're constructing these, it's like, oh, this is, you know, this is a way to do this. So this is, it was good news when we learned we could leave these looking like the stones like this.
Okay, yeah, this looks a lot nicer. And is, is Richfield going to have to pay a cost difference to have that?
No.
Okay, that's double good news.
Yeah, yep. It's all good news, yeah, good, I'm glad, glad to show you these. All right, so another part of the project is to put in a couple of electric car charging stations. So when we went out to the Visual Quality Feedback and did the survey, we asked people where they'd like to see them, so we just had four quadrants there and said, you know, it's sort of a broad area, but would you like to see one in Area 1, 2, 3, and 4? And I think, I don't recall, I don't know, Amber, if you do, but I think Area 2 and Area 3 were the two most popular areas for a charging station. So, you know, that, that'll also be determined about where's an appropriate location, is there a publics area where people can wait where their car's getting charged, but there will be a couple of charging stations that are part of the project. And then lastly, the next, the last portion of public engagement was to really focus in on areas along the corridor, and we really focused on the four bridges that are being built, and tried to ask people what their priorities were for some of the aesthetics, but what other kind of amenities they'd like to see. So just to remind people, you know, Nicolet, the Nicolet Bridge is being rebuilt, Portland is being rebuilt, and 12th is being rebuilt, and then there's a new pedestrian bridge going in that kind of connects Chicago up and over. And then in this legend here, you can see where there's, you know, potential noise walls. Pink is where there's retaining walls. The yellow is where there's going to be either replaced sidewalks or new sidewalks, so a lot of good pedestrian infrastructure in here. And then, if you remember, all three of the bridges that are being rebuilt will have wider sidewalks and separated bicycle lanes on them, so the bike and ped experience will be better at all those crossings, and of course, the dedicated pedestrian bridge will have ramps up, so people can also bike or roll over those. So when we went out to the community to ask about each of these locations, we showed them these example pictures of what could be there, so would they like to see public art in these areas? Would they like to see benches or other street furniture? Is it an area where they'd like to see some enhanced landscaping? Are there other public amenities like picnic areas or a play structure they'd like to see? Is this a spot where they'd like to see some of the, you know, the themed railings or other aesthetics? Or is it a spot that needs special signage or wayfinding, you know, kind of pedestrian level things? Some of these things, like the themed railings and the landscaping are things that Mindot would include in the Visual Quality Manual, so what we would pay for. The other things, the, you know, some of the signage, the, you know, certainly, you know, play structures and things, that's not part of transportation budgets, public art, that's not something we pay for, or, you know, street furniture. So those are things that the community could, you know, the cities could add later, or a partner that you have. This really came out of the interest in having, you know, kind of integrating the project into the community and addressing the interest to have placemaking. So the public responded to, you know, what kinds of things they'd like to see in each of these locations. And these are some of the pictures that we showed them. So the pedestrian bridge that goes, that's going to be added at Chicago, if you can imagine this, this frontage road is going to end at Chicago, so people will drive up 78th, and then they'll turn on Chicago. And then the entrance, you know, the exit ramp off of 494 will start about here and go up. So this place, this area right here will be green space, so this could be a spot where there's a bench, or there's a potential for noise walls along here, so there could be a mural on the noise wall. So again, you know, to help you all decide what you might want to add later, we were asking people what they'd like to see. Another spot that we showed people was Nicolet here, and again, this cross-section of the bridge shows a wider sidewalk, the separated bike lanes, and then, you know, the three lanes of traffic going there. There won't be entrance and exit ramps to 494 here anymore, so there'll be more, you know, this will be more green space. It will be ponds for water, stormwater management, so there'll be a depression there, but it can, there can be some nice plantings around there, maybe there'd even be a spot, you know, spot on the edge for a bench, but, you know, these are areas that could look a lot different after the project is done. Another spot that we asked people about was Portland, and there'll be some big changes here. Of course, this isn't the frontage road anymore, this is the exit ramp off of 494. There will be, you know, Portland will be widened, because this will be carrying all the traffic from people exiting and exiting 494, but we are adding the cycle track there, so the pedestrian and bike experience will be a lot better. Let's see. I think there's, I'm not going to point anything else out on this one, but, okay, so I'm going to jump ahead to this. This is just north of Portland, just makes sense to talk about this one next, we'll go back to those other slides. So this is looking north of that Portland Bridge, and we are acquiring the properties along the west side here, so it'll be a chance to make this sidewalk wider and make a better experience walking up to this park. There are, is going to be the BRT line bus stops here and over here, so there'll be a pretty significant bus station there with a shelter and heating lamps and the pay stations, because you pay before you board, so this will be a kind of a gathering spot, so a way to make that a little bit nicer looking too. So we asked people the kind of amenities they'd like to see along these sidewalks on Portland. So then, jumping back to 12th, this is the other bridge that's being rebuilt. This is the Three Rivers Trail Bridge, and that will then be incorporated into the new bridge, so it'll, you won't have two separate bridges anymore, it'll be one big bridge. You can see the trail is still on the side, but it's incorporated into the new bridge. And then there's also the bike lanes on either side. So that's another bridge area. And then lastly, we asked people if there's anything they'd like to see different around the existing Ped Bridge. This one is not being rebuilt, so it'll still have the, you know, the, can't put the fancy railings on there, it's still going to have the chain link around the railings that are there, but the big improvement is there'll be sidewalks all along here, so the sidewalks along the frontage roads will be continuous on both sides, and so, you know, it'll be a better way for people to get to the bridge and use it. So those are really the areas that we showed folks and got feedback, and like I said, the responses that we get will be incorporated into the Context Sensitive Solutions Framework Guide. The city staff are reviewing that, and there won't be anything in the guides that you guys don't want in there, so if there's some suggestion for a piece of artwork or something, and you want to say, no, we don't want to put art there, then we won't make that suggestion. This is really designed to be a guide that will help you in the future think about what, where you can add some things and what you might be able to add. And then in that guide as well, there'll be information about where you might be able to put what we call monument signs. There was quite a bit of discussion in the, from the public and in the Visual Quality Advisory Committee about where to do like city identification things. There is a possibility to put kind of a small name on the bridges, but it's kind of hard to see usually, especially with the big green highway signs. So the preference was to identify a place where once, one location going eastbound and one location going westbound, you could have a city identifying sign. Here's an example of Eden Prairies, and this again is not something Mindot pays for, it's something that communities can come back and add later, but like I said, we will be identifying some locations where there's enough space to put these, so that'll be in that Context Sensitive Solutions Framework that you can reference in the future. And then the final Visual Quality Manual, we've got a set of icons that kind of show thumbnail of each design, so you can see that, recognize there's some of the different options for railings. There's some different options for the textures that we'd put on a retaining wall and so forth, different landscaping, you know, we do have an icon that shows how we might do vines climbing up a noise wall, the type of plantings that would go in the ponds, and then where we might put trees or other types of landscaping. So anyway, those little icons we're using to point to different sections. This is an example of what one of the pages might look like, because they don't look too close at which icons are where, because this is an older map, we keep, you know, moving things around and getting feedback from folks, but there'll be, as you can see, that's the whole corridor, and this little red box is just this one page. So you can see we're giving some pretty detailed instructions on, you know, what aesthetics are going where, and which railings, and which retaining walls, and this icon here is a place that says, you know, this is a place that some of the, you know, it tells you, go look at the Context Sensitive Solutions Manual, because there's some ideas here for what you can add later. So that little, it's supposed to look like a little mural or a piece of artwork, but that might identify that there should be a bench here, so that people have walked a long distance up and over the ramp, you know, shopping at Walmart, you know, have a place to sit before they continue their trip, you know, back to their apartment or their home. So that's what the manual, the pages in the manual look like, in addition to the renderings of the aesthetic elements that I showed previously. And that's all I have. This website here is where you can get more information about the project, and I will mention that in the past, we've had a site called 494openhouse.com, and that open house page has gone away. We're all done with all the open houses and the public meetings, and so all that content is now just on the Mindot website. So this is the place to go for more information about the project. So that's my presentation. I can stop sharing, and then if people have a question, I can call it back up again and show a picture if we want to, but otherwise, I'll get your faces back, so I can see the comments and see people's hands up, so. Any questions?
I will just ask, so I don't know where the line is between what's Visual Quality and what's other engineering, but a couple specific questions I had. Lighting on the bridge, like pedestrian scale lighting, is that included at this point, or is that like something to be determined if we have to pitch in for?
Yep, good question. That's already defined as some of the, something that the cities pay for. So that's already in the, in the, you know, there's a complicated spreadsheet that shows what Mindot pays for and whatnot, and that was discussed long before I even got on to the project, that the lighting on the bridges is part of the budget for the cities to pay for. And Amber, if you've got any more information about that, or Andrew, feel free to unmute and answer.
Just to be clear, it's in like our current estimate of what we have to contribute, it's not like we would have to add that, and we have not yet accounted for that cost?
Yeah, it's, it's already been calculated into the costs, and like I said, Amber and Andrew, if you've got anything else to add, I don't want to.
No, thanks, Lisa, yeah. It's currently in the estimated cost that we had presented to the city long ago. So, yep, it's already in there.
Right. My other question is about planting areas and where exactly those will be, especially on the bridges. I know the Lyndale Avenue Bridge included some planting areas that unfortunately haven't been very successful. Is there anything anticipated on the bridge structures or immediately adjacent to the bridges, or are the only planting opportunities to be like well away from the bridges, like on the streets?
So there are some planted, there's some areas that are next to the bridges, nothing on the bridges, but there are some spots that are, you know, identified as potential locations, and I should have mentioned this before, but the landscape, so we're identifying spots that could be good for landscaping in the future, but Mindot always comes back a couple years after a project and does the landscaping. And, you know, that's when the design, the full plan will be developed, and then will come in later. And one of the main reasons for that is, you know, after a project's built, there's like two or three years of warranty period where the contractor maybe needs to come back in and fix something or change something a little bit, and so if they're stomping all over the new plants, you know, that doesn't give them a good chance to grow. So, you know, for a couple, two, three years after the project is done, there won't be the landscaping, but, you know, we do come back later. An example of that right now is we're coming back to do the 35W landscaping right now. That plan is, you know, currently in place, and, you know, will get planted soon, so. So, you know, that's a a case of where, you know, we had a big project, it's over with. And now we're planning about how we're going to go back and and put in the landscaping along the corridor. So I hope that answers your question about the level of detail the landscaping is right now and then when we'll come back to do that.
Yep, that does. And then just one last thing I wanted to say, probably outside the scope, since I got the MINDOT engineer on the call. I really want to emphasize how problematic that MINDOT, for the standard design, looks very similar at sixty six and thirty five is right now for pedestrians, where like ninety percent of cars making a right turn on red are stopping well in the crosswalk, approaching the crosswalk at twenty miles an hour or more. It's extremely dangerous and I see that design used all over the place. And it looks very similar to what's currently anticipated at Portland and four ninety four. So I'm really hopeful that as you get into these final designs that that's somehow accounted for. And if if ninety percent of drivers are doing it a certain way, you're doing something, something is wrong with that detail. So I really hope that can be addressed, because it can be as beautiful as we want, but if nobody feels safe walking in there, nobody will enjoy all the hard work that you're putting in here.
Thanks for that feedback.
Yeah, thank you.
Amber, do you have, do you have more detail on how we're handling pedestrian movements at that? Or not, is it now, are we not at that level of detail yet?
Yeah, we're not, oh, and my light's not on, you can't see me at all, can you? We're not at that level of detail yet. We're still working through the design build contract requirements. So those are in process right now. One of the things I would like, you said sixty sixth and thirty five. Can, can you send me any information on that? That would be actually really helpful.
Yes, I will send you that and I'll see, see our public works, folks.
That would be awesome. Thank you so much.
And one other thing I want to mention, we're really sticking to, you know, so when MINDOT does a project, we have, you know, a percentage of, you know, pieces, we have a percentage that we can use towards aesthetics. So let's say, for example, you know, retaining walls, we can spend five percent of the cost of the retaining wall on aesthetics. And so if if the designs cost more than that, then we need to ask for community, you know, contributions and the cost participation. And we have, we're working to keep all the aesthetics within MINDOT's budget, so that we're not needing to ask the local governments for any additional money for aesthetics. So just, you know, like all the stuff that's in that visual quality manual, the architectural treatments on the infrastructure is, you know, MINDOT's cost. And then that's why we have this separate guide. It's like, it's stuff we can't pay for. Like I said, we can't pay for public art, but we know there's some interest to add that later. That's where you'd see the the things that, you know, the community might pay for at a later date. Yes, council member, Sipul?
To follow up on council member Hugh Ford Oldery's earlier question with the lighting, you will pick out the lights, so it's standard across the corridor and we just cost split it between the cities. Is that correct?
So we're, the landscape architects are making some recommendations for what, you know, looks good with the design. But we're also taking a lot of input from the city staff that have been sitting on the city meetings and the visual quality advisory committee to make sure they're, you know, if it's, if it's, if it's lighting that you're already using in other parts of the city, well, we might as well use it there so that you've got, you know, the parts to repair it or the, you know, the, the costs for maintaining it and whatnot are part of your standard system. You know, since it is two cities, you know, we're kind of like, which city standards do we go with? But that's, you know, that's all part of the discussions that are happening with, at the staff level, so.
Thank you, that helps.
Melissa, you have anything else to add or Ben?
Yes, I I will. So to go further with that, council members, just today in public works, we had a meeting on lighting for this project. So that's, it's an ongoing process. And then we'll also be talking with Bloomington soon as well, just to make sure we're all on the same page.
Well, if there aren't any other questions, we can give everybody a few minutes back to their evening or to prepare for your next meeting. One last chance, anybody? No? Well, then Commissioner Caneely, I think you can adjourn the meeting. And let's just thank our MINDOT partners for their presentation tonight. Thanks for coming and updating everybody.
Yes, thank you, everybody.
I would say, well, thank you for for the this time. It was, it's nice to show what we've been up to, so thank you very much.
Thanks, everybody. Then, yeah, we can adjourn.